Hm?
Probably because it was 25 degrees this morning and the heat was on and it's probably still.
It's supposed to be cooler in here.
Yeah, it is in here. The temperature's gone up pretty quick this morning.
My thing about it is I don't have much wind, so I want a little breeze.
Not that way tomorrow.
Yeah. And then we're gonna get from one prediction Wednesday and Thursday of a half inch and another one a inch and a half and early snow.
I'd show them three to five inches of snow.
I haven't seen that one yet.
Three to five inches, I'll make a motion to accept it in five minutes.
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Bye.
I just saw someone Thursday, are they showing, are they forecasting?
I'm showing Wednesday night. Let's jump down and do the resolution with NODA, the hazard plan.
I think one is gonna be sufficient. I think all we need, or all that we need for FEMA is a copy. And here's a copy of the plan. Nancy can keep it up here in this office. I'm gonna make three other copies at some point to take to the district mawns.
Okay.
So that you guys can.
I have one in my office also.
I will as well.
Ask her.
Yes, I will do that as well.
I don't want to ask anybody else.
I'll make sure we get you a copy of Lenihan's too as well.
I have a binder. We're gonna just take the old one out if you don't have an old binder.
Okay. I haven't made those copies, but I'll do that this week and I'll bring it up to you. I'll get it hole punched and if that works. I think Burlington is the last one to have a meeting and so that's on the 28th of this month and so by March 1st we should be able to send everything up.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
So adoption should happen early part of March.
Okay. That'll work. Oh my gosh.
I'm gonna change these districts. Thank you.
Okay, sign. County general?
No, county general.
I'm like. Isn't it?
Yep.
Yes.
Hello. What, uh, between us and you or the cattle guard at you? Twenty-two sixty-two, or uh, twenty-six forty? Yes. Oh, okay. Same old good. Yep. Yep, same combo you had on it. I just changed the lock. Uh, end of May is twenty-two sixty-two. Yep. Alright, bye.
Do we have an under-? On it in the window. Just says sealed.
We still have to have it underized.
There's only place to underize on there.
We'll just have to.
Type an under-?
Thank you.
Yep.
For the confusion.
I'll just put your copy in your box.
Thank you.
I'll sign the highway budget. Is that your neck?
Oh, no.
Oh, I thought that was your neck cracker. Good gosh.
She didn't speak very plain. I have no idea. What it is. I got an idea of what it is. Purple.
Wait, sideways not on it. I'm not a surgeon for something.
I'll move deputy.
I'll second that. All in favor? Blank purchase orders.
That blanket's from District One, District Two, County General and Sheriff. And the sign is the top one for County General.
I'm gonna wait to accept the blank purchases.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
So crossing permit?
Real wide.
No, no, I'm serious. No charge on me.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I'm gonna reject you. No charging for me.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
APR funds?
All I had was, I'll email Mike back. He emailed us, Mike Jones did, um, for Lambert and Byron and Amarita. They haven't accepted their monies. I know Byron doesn't have a board. I don't know about Amarita.
Yeah, Byron's got one. Down board. Yeah.
Well, what's her name, will not get a new bond because she says they don't have enough board members to.
Caleb Roberts is on it and uh.
Somebody needs to get with them then because we still have the bond under, um. Actually, it's her name. Yeah, we still have the bond on her name. So we've asked and asked and asked for a new bond and Shelley.
You're talking about Amarita?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you meant Byron.
I said Amarita, I'm sorry. I did say Amarita. Byron, yeah. Amarita hasn't accepted.
Amarita was under Macklemore.
Yeah.
And now, um, she talked to me Friday. Stuart.
Shelley.
Shelley Stewart is getting that, so there, she's operating under it now.
Does she have a bond, I wonder?
Well, I don't know about that.
Last time I called her, she was still trying to figure something out because we were still working under, um, um.
Macklemore, uh, that.
Odessa, Odessa.
Odessa.
We were still working under Odessa's bond.
What he's saying.
But I'll call Shelley and ask her then. Anyway, they.
Because there's some federal money at NODA right now. They're trying to get for some rocks in the street.
This is that ARP money. They've never done their things except the ARP money. Amarita, Byron and Lambert haven't.
And uh, she was telling me what is it, six thousand some dollars? Yeah, she told me about that, so she mentioned it.
Byron's is six thousand one twelve and Amarita's is six thousand six thirty-six.
Yeah, yeah.
And then Lambert's is a thousand dollars, so, um. Anyway, Mike, um, Jones said if they need any help, he will be willing to help them get their ARP money if they want some help. And I would find to help them in any way also.
But Byron hadn't got theirs?
So that's the actual ARP money, not the.
This is the actual ARP, yeah.
Not private.
Yeah, yeah.
Because when I was talking earlier, I was thinking the water.
I was sure that Caleb told me they had theirs, but I double checked.
I don't know when he printed this. Um, this says, as of two-ten, they did not have, had not accepted their shit.
I've got that list in my office and all that.
Hold on.
I'll get with Caleb. I know he's on the board and that girl, what's her name that's been on the board out there for so long? Hudgens.
Oh, Barbara.
Barbara Hudgens, yeah.
Um, I didn't watch the last webinar on it because it was under economic development. I thought it probably leaned more to municipalities. But in this, um, I did look over the, the PowerPoint that they had in the presentation. And this is saying for the municipals. I don't know if this is good for the counties. I did send in an email to, um, some of the other people that I always watch those ARP. This is saying the second half won't come until 12 months later.
When did they change that?
I don't know. That is the first I've ever heard that, but I thought I'd pass that on to you guys. Um, but like I said, this is, this is on towns and cities. I don't know if theirs is different. I know Cherokee got their first half about the same time that we did. But I haven't heard this here. And so like I said, I put an email into a couple of people that I know have been watching these also. Um, but I did not watch, um, Thursdays. I got busy and I didn't have a time to watch it, but I said I went over the, that and that caught my eye going, oh, that's won't be here then until, which May is gonna be here before we know it.
That's what I'm saying, right away.
But that kind of does explain why we haven't got the second half, so.
Very good.
I said I hadn't, I hadn't heard that anywhere on anything.
Monthly officers report?
I have the, um, Corps, Park, um, uh, preservation and I have the sheriff's. There's just one signature on that top one.
I'm moving to accept the monthly officer report. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, decorations surplus for District Two and oh-six should be picked up.
Mike, those two places for this.
Oh, sorry.
I'm moving to get the resolution.
I'll second that. All in favor? Resolution for disposing of equipment. County clerk, two roller shelves. The ones in the basement?
Yeah, there's that one in the basement that I, um, he said he took it out on the, in the back, but I looked down there and looked. I said, okay, should we dispose of it? I'll take it off.
I'm moving.
Go ahead.
I'm moving to get the resolution.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Transport juveniles for January twenty-two.
Just one signature on that.
I'm moving to get the transportation.
I'll second that too. All in favor?
Aye.
Request to remove Desiree Gibson as receiving officer and add Ryan to the family. I'll make the motion to accept this. I'll make the motion to accept this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unfolding juveniles.
I'll move with Captain.
Uh, payroll, I need it by Thursday if you guys, before you guys leave, if you guys are gonna be working, I need to know, because we need to schedule a special meeting. Because I cannot come in this weekend to run payroll.
She's got it written on the calendar up there, the eighteenth, I think, if that's Friday.
But that would be Friday.
Yeah.
But you guys don't work on Fridays normally, so before you leave on Thursday.
Oh.
But if you guys work on Friday, I need to know early, because I'm shorthanded Thursday and Friday both, and I cannot come in this weekend and run it, and I won't have.
She always puts it on the big counter off of the stadium, so.
Yep, yep, it's Friday, but you guys don't normally work Friday, so.
And how's the weather, guys?
Yep, depends on what the weather does, whether we're working or not, but I brought one in Friday before, when it, and, and, you know, we'll have it done.
But I don't, I don't have, I have, I'm shorthanded Friday, so I need it as early as possible on Friday.
Mm. Okay.
Because I've gotta do two of the people's jobs on Friday, so we're gonna be way shorthanded Friday.
Mm.
So if you guys are not bringing it in Thursday evening, please just send me a phone call, so, or a text, and let me know, so I don't come in early to run payroll.
Mm.
So, and I got two, two that are going to class. Who made the motion, Mr.?
Jay did.